...passed in 2016, so it should sound very familiar. It is seven. Is Tom there yet?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Call this meeting to order. Mike, the roll.
Helwig.
Here.
Holland.
Here.
Humphrey.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Sorenson. Ward.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Mayor, call your wise.
Here. Um, I will ask everyone to mute themselves while, uh, Tom leads us in the pledge. Thank you. Our first item is minutes from the May eighteenth special meeting and May eighteenth, twenty twenty regular meeting. Move approval, Catherine.
Brian.
Got a motion by Catherine and a second by Brian. All those in favor, please signify at the roll.
Aye.
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 We're having some trouble hearing you, City Hall.
Ward.
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye.
If you would call my name, I didn't say, I would say aye.
Wilson.
Also, Wilson. Alright, minutes are approved. Uh, adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions, Mike or John?
You wanted to add that, uh, second proclamation to, uh, for probably be proclamation recognizing Vermillion as a community of tolerance and peace?
I think it's, uh, item five B. Can I see a motion for? Move approval as amended?
Second.
Got a motion by Catherine and a second by Rich. All those in favor, please indicate at the roll.
Helwig.
Aye.
Holland.
Aye.
Humphrey.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Sorenson. Ward.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye. The agenda is adopted. Our first item is visitors, our first item under, uh, item five as visitors to be heard. All persons addressing the council should use the microphone at the podium. Uh, we can also take comments through this Zoom and through our, um, YouTube channel comments. Please raise your hand or, uh, make yourself notice to be recognized. If you want to make a comment, you do need to state your name and address, and that includes in those YouTube comments. For items not on the agenda, members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard on any topic not on the agenda. Remarks are limited to five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. For agenda items, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizens who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item. Public testimony will then be closed and the topic will be given to the governing body for possible action. At this point, only city council members and staff may discuss the current agenda item unless a council member moves to allow another person to speak and there is unanimous consent from the council. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the presiding officer at any time. And especially for those of you that are following online, um, at the beginning of the item, as we're hearing from staff, you can start to put in your comments. We do know that there's a little bit of a delay. Um, and that will allow time for those to, to be ready for, um, James Purdy to read at the time of public comment. Um, we will let you know and he will let you know in those comments when public comment is closed for that item and we move on to the next one. Is there anyone in the audience at City Hall that wishes to speak to something not on the agenda?
Looks like none at this time.
James, are there any comments that come in not on the agenda?
Uh, no, there are not.
Seeing none, our next item is, um, proclamation A, LGBTQ plus Pride Month proclamation, and Tom?
Whereas, everyone should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, or hatred based on their gender identity or sexual orientation. And whereas, the city of Vermillion supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas, all people have the right to be treated on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings. And whereas, the city of Vermillion accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believes that diverse population leads to a more vibrant community. And whereas, the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ plus communities contribute to our cultural, our civic, our academic, and our economic successes. And whereas, the month of June is designated as LGBTQ plus Pride Month nationwide, and it's celebrated by cities around the globe. And whereas, the city of Vermillion has a diverse LGBTQ plus community that includes people of all ethnicities, religions, and professions. And whereas, the city of Vermillion will celebrate its second annual Pride Month during June twenty twenty with activities for the whole community to participate in and enjoy. Now therefore be it resolved, we the governing body of the city of Vermillion, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim June twenty twenty as LGBTQ plus Pride Month. In the city of Vermillion and encourage the citizens of our community to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of citizens and visitors of all sexual orientations and gender identities. Dated at Vermillion, South Dakota, this first day of June twenty twenty.
Thank you, Tom. Julia, if you would like to read the proclamation declaring Vermillion a community of tolerance and peace.
Thank you. Whereas Vermillion, South Dakota, is a community of caring people who have created a healthy, safe, and secure place for people of all geographic, ethnic, economic, religious, and lifestyle backgrounds to live, work, raise their children, and age with dignity. And whereas, hate violence has become a frequent occurrence across the nation. And whereas fundamentally, tolerance is a personal decision that comes from an attitude that is learnable and embraceable. A belief that every person on earth is a treasure, vital to the health and prosperity of all. And whereas Vermillion is a community promoting tolerance and inclusion while focusing on how we interact with our families, our neighbors, and coworkers by respecting them and ourselves. And whereas, we the people of Vermillion, in keeping with the principle of equal civil rights for all, unequivocally oppose any manifestation of hatred and prejudice toward any group or individual in our community. Now therefore be it resolved, we the governing body of the city of Vermillion, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim that Vermillion continues to be a community of tolerance and peace. And we resolve to stand together with people of good faith in our community to overcome our misunderstandings and fears and to influence our children, our peers, and our neighborhoods. Dated at Vermillion, South Dakota, this first day of June twenty twenty.
Thank you, Julia. Before we move on to our public hearings, is there anything from the council? Seeing none, uh, our first public hearing, six A is annual malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license renewals. And Mike?
Applications for renewal of the on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine licenses have been received from the establishments listed in the notice of hearing. The police chief prepared a report indicating their performance and when compliance checks were completed at each establishment since July two thousand and nineteen. City ordinance requires a written management plan upon application by a licensee where convictions of a violation of any law, rule, regulation, or ordinance relevant to alcoholic beverage control has taken place. Uh, the management plan included in your packet, uh, was for, uh, Dwight Iverson for the Cherry Pit Stop that had failed a compliance check. Uh, had included in the memo a background of previous compliance checks at that location. Uh, the police chief's memo indicates that two businesses had failed compliance checks. The other business was an on-sale liquor license, so the management plan will be included in November with the license, liquor license renewals. The city council has the ability to renew a license on basically two criteria, suitable person and suitable location. With respect to the location criteria, licenses have been previously approved for all locations. With respect to suitable person criteria, the city council can also determine that applicant is not of suitable moral character and not renew a license. If the renewal application is to be denied, a motion must state the reason for the denial and the applicant cannot reapply for one year. City receives a hundred and fifty dollars for each on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license. There's another hundred and fifty dollars that is sent to the state, uh, for businesses with video lottery machines. Uh, there's also a fifty dollar fee for each machine unless the fee was paid with the liquor license in December. Uh, administration would recommend approval of the license renewal, uh, with the Old Lumber Company. They had applied for a license to expand their license in May of two thousand and eighteen to include, uh, the eleven Court Street. Uh, since that time, uh, any of the renewal of licenses, uh, have been contingent upon the building inspector final inspection to expand into the eleven Court Street. Uh, the rest of the license recommended approval. I can read through quick the list of licenses. We have Bunions LLC for Bunions. EB Street Two for Kerry's Bar at eighteen West Main Street. Cafe Brulee Inc. for Cafe Brulee at twenty-four West Main Street. Casey's Retail Company Inc. for Casey's General Store at six fifteen Jefferson Street. Casey's Retail Company for Casey's General Store at thirteen oh-two Princeton Street. Charcoal Lounge Incorporated for Charcoal Lounge, six and eight West Main Street. Circle Thirteen LLC for the Public Room Thirteen at thirteen thirteen West Cherry. City of Vermillion for the Bluffs Golf Course at twenty twenty-one East Main Street. City of Vermillion for the Municipal Liquor Store at eight twenty Cottage Avenue. Coyote Convenience Inc. for Coyote Convenience at one hundred and sixteen East Cherry Street. D and D Foods Inc. for the Hartford Steak Company and Tavern at seven Court Street. Dwight Iverson for the Cherry Pit Stop at twenty-three East Main Street. Fireworks Inc. for Dakota Brick House at fifteen West Main Street. Hy-Vee Food Stores Inc. for Hy-Vee at five twenty-five West Cherry Street. I-Mart Stores LLC for I-Mart Stores USA at eight thirty East Cherry Street. John Donald Enterprise for Silk Road Cafe at twelve West Main Street. Mexico Viejo Inc. for Mexico Viejo Mexican Restaurant at four thirty-two East Cherry Street. NPC International Inc. for Pizza Hut at nine twenty-eight East Cherry. Old Lumber Company Inc. for the Old Lumber Company Bar and Grill at eleven and fifteen Court Streets. Prairie River Inc. for our pizza at two West Main Street. Pump and Stuff of Vermillion Inc. for Pump and Stuff, Bittery Lottery Room One at two oh-three East Main Street. Pump and Stuff of Vermillion Inc. for Pump and Stuff, Bittery Lottery Room Two at two oh-three East Main Street. R and D Management LLC for Alfredo Pizza at eight thirty-one East Cherry Street. Red Steakhouse Inc. for Red Steakhouse at one East Main. Sunset Oil Inc. for Lucky Seven Casino at six twenty-nine Stanford Street. Sunset Oil Inc. for Sunset Casino at six twenty-nine Stanford Street. Valiant Vineyards Inc. for Valiant Vineyard at fifteen hundred West Main. Varsity Pub LLC for the Varsity at one thirteen East Main Street. Walmart Stores Inc. for Walmart Supercenter at twelve oh-seven Princeton Street. Uh, management recommend approving of all the license with the contingency on the Old Lumber Company.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone at City Hall that wishes to comment on this item?
It don't, doesn't look like there's anybody that wants to comment.
James, are there any comments on the electronic?
Uh, no, there are not.
Seeing no comments, I will turn it to the council. Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Julia, second by Brian. Julia, does that include the contingency of the building inspector on OLC?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor, please signify at the roll.
Helwig.
Aye.
Holland.
Aye.
Humphrey. Price.
Aye.
Sorenson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye. Motion passes. Our next item, uh, is item six B, resolution approving the special assessment roll and notice of special assessments for the installation of street lighting along West Main Street, west of Stanford Street. And Shane?
Thank you. Uh, at the October twenty-first, two nine, two thousand and nineteen meeting, council approved a resolution adopting the resolution of necessity for the installation of, uh, streetlights along West Main Street, west of Stanford Street. Um, that work has been completed and final payment has been made. Uh, special assessments were calculated and filed with the finance officer on April twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty. Um, and at the May fourth, two thousand and twenty meeting, uh, council approved resolution setting a public hearing date for tonight. Uh, notice of this hearing was advertised in the newspaper and mailed to all affected property owners. Uh, staff had estimated the project to cost ten thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. Uh, the project ended up coming in at ten thousand, forty-five dollars and sixty cents, which was approved at the April sixth, two thousand and twenty meeting. Uh, per state statute, the city is required to hold a public hearing to allow the affected property owners, uh, place to review and discuss any concerns regarding the assessed values. Uh, construction costs, as I said, were ten thousand, forty-five dollars and sixty cents. We added a eight percent administrative fee on that, which brings the total assessed cost to ten thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. Uh, administration recommends approving the assessment role for the installation of street lighting along West Main Street, west of Stanford Street.
Thank you, Shane. Is there anyone in the audience that has a comment on this item?
No, it doesn't look like there's any at City Hall.
Thank you. James, are there any comments?
No, there are not.
Seeing none, I will turn it to the council.
I move approval.
Second, Wilson.
Got a motion by Holland and a second by Wilson. All those in favor, please say aye at the roll.
Helwig.
Aye.
Holland.
Aye.
Humphrey.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Sorenson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Call your wise.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Our next item is second reading of ordinance fourteen fourteen, emergency ordinance to limit business occupancy to address COVID-nineteen pandemic. And John?
Thank you. This is, uh, I guess maybe a little recap here. Uh, ordinance fourteen thirteen, um, the council, as you recall, uh, through a series of special meetings on March twenty-fourth and March, uh, thirtieth, you adopted ordinance fourteen thirteen, and then you modified it at your May fourth, uh, meeting. Um, and so after the May fourth resolution modifying it, that's when the thirty-three percent occupancy, uh, was provided for through that resolution that was adopted. Um, I guess I would note that that ordinance did expire on May thirtieth, and emergency ordinance can only last sixty days by state statute. So that emergency ordinance has expired and there are no restrictions currently in place. That was a question we got a couple times today. There's current, there are currently no restrictions in place. Ordinance be, uh, ordinance before you this evening is ordinance fourteen fourteen. It is very similar to ordinance fourteen thirteen, uh, in several ways. You did have your first reading of ordinance, uh, fourteen fourteen, uh, at your last meeting. Uh, I would note just a couple of differences between ordinance fourteen fourteen and ordinance fourteen thirteen, which is, which is modified through the May fourth resolution, as I said, is expired. Ordinance fourteen fourteen, uh, provides for a fifty percent occupancy, uh, versus the thirty-three percent that was in, um, ordinance fourteen thirteen. Um, the wearing of masks by the general public when social distancing can't be maintained is language, uh, is included in ordinance fourteen fourteen. That was not in ordinance fourteen thirteen. As well as, uh, some, uh, additional general language about social distancing guidelines following those, um, in a proper so, proper hygiene. Item two B in ordinance fourteen fourteen, uh, we did clarify that to state that the six-foot distance, uh, between customers is to be maintained. That was a question that arose a lot following the modification to ordinance fourteen thirteen. And then a little bit of housekeeping cleanup when, uh, fourteen fourteen was, uh, comprised. We took out some of those, uh, businesses that do not exist in Vermillion, for example, airport concessionaires. So when, uh, council first adopted fourteen thirteen, it was very similar to what some other communities had done, and we used that same language. Uh, with this, um, to the best of our knowledge, uh, Vermillion and Brookings are the only two communities that have restrictions like this, and so, uh, we tried to clean up the language to make it, uh, a little bit more Vermillion specific. Uh, we do have no changes, uh, to this language since it was last reviewed and approved by the council at your last meeting. Um, if ordinance fourteen fourteen is adopted, as you typically do with a second reading of any ordinance, you would need to set a fee for violation of, uh, the ordinance, and that is, uh, item eight A under your new business. Uh, I would note that there have been, uh, no, um, violations of the previous ordinance fourteen thirteen, and so there were no fines or citations, uh, that were issued wi- with regard to the restrictions that were part of that ordinance. Um, I think there's really kind of two things for the council, uh, to cover tonight with regard to, uh, this. One is obviously the, uh, ordinance fourteen fourteen that's up for second reading, as well as the continued discussion on the park and recreation programming, uh, that you had a little bit at noon, as well as at the last meeting. Included in your packet, obviously was a copy of ordinance fourteen fourteen, uh, it was, as was approved at first reading, and I think the council's received, uh, some other correspondence. Um, if we received it here at City Fall, Hall, we did share, uh, with all of you, uh, but we do have, um, that, uh, letter from several businesses that came in, uh, last night that was forwarded to you. So be happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of the, uh, the background with regard to the ordinance.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone at City Hall that wishes to comment on this item?
They're fighting over who gets to go first, I think.
Um, I apologize, but I do have a little bit to say here, so hopefully I won't take too long. I'm on my phone because, um, I should have printed some of the stuff off, but I'm going ahead and, and read it, I believe, because that way it's definitely coming from, uh, the right people. So I, um, did, I have actually, in the last few weeks, been getting a lot of texts from, uh, local business owners, um, uh, saying, what do you think about this? You know, what do you think we can do? And after really kind of being blown up on our phones, Jim and I both decided to, uh, you know, at least kind of figure out how everybody felt about, uh, the decision and this ordinance. Um, and then after doing so, um, this letter actually was written in, um, uh, agreement, uh, with all these businesses that are signed here at the bottom, so I'd actually just like to read this letter. This letter is in regards to city ordinance fourteen fourteen. We want to start by saying how much we all love this town. We love Vermillion and the people who make it what it is. Most of us have dedicated our lives to our businesses and this community. We are all in and we are all in this together, and we want you to know how we feel and how this is affecting us. We are all aware that every county around us has opened their restaurants and bars a hundred percent at this time. We are also aware that there have been no new reported cases of COVID in our county for the last two weeks. This has been within the timeframe of us being open at limited capacity. We are aware that you also know this. The income for small business owners is so much different than the income for government slash state slash city employees. We only get paid when we make money. No one else is giving us a salary or hourly wage. No one else is paying for our vacations. We don't continue getting paid when we're not open. We have all sacrificed these things for what we love to do. We just need a fighting chance to get back on our feet. We hear people say, just take out another loan and you can get through this. We know that most small businesses are already walking a tightrope fiscally and can't afford to add another loan payment to the already struggling, um, budget. Running a small business that is partially open is not cheap. The cost to run commercial equipment, money spent on utilities, inventory, these don't go down to compensate for the amount of business lost by having limited capacity. We still have licensing fees for wine, beer, food, spirits, music, property taxes, mortgage payments, insurance, waste management, internet cable, phone bills, payroll, and many other expenses. Many of us also have concerns about losing revenue to other towns. Due to other, uh, to our city hindering our ability to feed and entertain groups and events, we were recently told that our local auctioneer had an auction scheduled in Vermillion for June thirteenth and had to move it out of town. Both of our town's primary auctioneers have stated that they are seriously considering not bringing any auctions back to Vermillion if this continues. We all know that these auctions provide ample time for people to come spend money in our businesses. We have been told recently by customers that they are excited to head back up to Sioux Falls, uh, for more food and entertainment options now that they are fully open. We take pride in being able to donate to community needs and functions. We donate thousands of dollars to our community every year. We do everything we can to help our community. People still come in regularly to ask us for donations. It's kind of ironic because some of these people are the same ones that don't want us to reopen. One business owner recently shared that the United Way and Food Pantry came across for donations this week, and she had to say, I'm sorry, but we've been closed for seven weeks and we have nothing to give. This is hard for all of us to hear. We also want you to be aware that if things don't change quickly, some of us have discussed taking up legal action against the city. We are trying to avoid this. Failing to allow us to open in full capacity will be fatal for some of our businesses. Unemployment checks have stopped for most people because businesses are rehiring. Government funding has run out for us and the public. Vermillion residents are looking for jobs and we can't give them any because we do not have the need for more employees, when we can't accommodate customers. When the city is controlling certain businesses and keeping them from staying afloat, why would anyone want to bring a new business and invest in Vermillion? Are we as business owners not trustworthy to make our own decisions and to operate as we see fit? Are we as Vermillion residents not able to decide for ourselves whether or not we are comfortable dining out or going to public places? We think we are. As eating establishments, we always uphold to the highest standard our guest and food safety. Most of us have had many years of, uh, guest and food safety experiences and countless inspections to ensure that safety. We are all currently required by the state of South Dakota to have management working in our establishments who have passed and keep current their food safety handling certification. This certification meets all the requirement of the National Registration Association with regards to everything food related, including temperature regulations, cross-contamination, food handling, foodborne illnesses, and much more. We currently have processes in place for guest safety and we are all working together to ensure we provide Vermillion a safe and stable place to be. What is the magic timeline? We can't wait for zero cases of COVID, which could be months or years from now. We know the virus has not disappeared, but we plan to continue with changes in procedures to keep our community as safe as we can. We do believe at this time that it is rational and reasonable to allow businesses to open as they see fit. We also feel that the public should be allowed to decide on their own comfort level. We know that you are having to make difficult decisions right now, as are we. We appreciate all of your concerns and we want you to know that we have not come to this decision lightly. Signed in agreement are these following businesses: Cafe Brulee, Dakota Brick House, Alfredo's, Hartford Steakhouse, Dairy Queen, Pizza Ranch, Taco John's, Old Lumber Company, Bunions, Cherry Pit Stop, Varsity, Main Street Pub, and Charcoal Lounge. Um, and I just wanted to add a few more things. Um, I got several texts from people. Uh, this is the first time we've ever created any kind of a, a business group like this. Uh, when Jim and I first came to town, there was more competition than there was camaraderie. Uh, we noticed that and, um, we're all very passionate people, but this has become very difficult for us, uh, fiscally. And that's really the main reason we've all gotten together. We all do agree on this. Uh, this, um, the riots supposedly, I'm not, I shouldn't even say that right now, but, uh, I apologize. But, uh, you know, if anything is happening tonight, uh, you know, any demonstration is peaceful, um, or otherwise. I do know that that scared some of the local business owners, so, uh, and they're concerned they want to be locked down, so that, some of them are not here. Um, I also have heard from a few others that, uh, they had other plans, but really, uh, wish that they could have made it to support, uh, their belief and, um, uh, uh, support the, uh, letter that we sent. Um, Alfredo's sent this, and he wanted me to read this. I just have a few of these. Um, I want you to know how much, uh, we appreciate the group effort. I took the survey, uh, and took the council and told the council that I would be forced I took the survey and took the council and told the council that I would be forced to rethink my decision of a Vermillion location if they go forward. Hiring a decent staff in Vermillion has been a nightmare and I won't go through it again if I lose staff. If I lose the staff I have due to cut hours." Matt Zeeman said that he's sorry he missed the timing of the draft of the letter. He did want to stand with the local business community, he just doesn't want to be any part of the legal activity. So he did state that, but his name is not on the letter. From Hartford Steakhouse, they are sorry they couldn't attend. Of course, our request would be that we run our own business the way we feel is proper. Molly Radigan said that, I should mention that most of our PPP loans or the government loans expire or run out today and there's no money there. Now we are responsible for earning revenue so we can make a living. Jim Peterson, thank you for your efforts. We are all, we all understand safety. We need to allow individuals to make choices. We need to have a community and business and businesses to come back to. The longer we do not open the economy or allow businesses a chance to survive, they will close or relocate elsewhere. So I know this is a lot of information and I want someone else to have a chance to speak and I'm sure I'm forgetting some things, but I wanted to thank the community for their support, for coming in to see us. We have all been wearing masks and doing everything we can to be as safe as possible. We definitely don't want to be a part of anything that, you know, would spread the disease any further and that's definitely not where we're intending to go. We just want to survive. So thank you for your time.
Anyone else in the audience at City Hall?
Hi, I'm Jim Waters.
Sorry, one second. I'm sorry, Jim. Steve?
I wanted to let the first speaker go for the 10-minute time that she did because I thought it was important to introduce this issue, but I do want to remind speakers that there's a five-minute limit.
Thank you, Steve. Go ahead, Jim.
Okay. I did speak with the council earlier today just to let them know my passion on this and to make sure that we had received the letter. The thing that people, you know, aren't understanding, that maybe some people aren't understanding right now is that, yes, we did get some help and yes, we did have banks that deferred our loans and things like that. Well, those deferments are done now and so we have to have income coming in to pay our mortgages and to pay our employees in order to keep our businesses open. A lot of us are walking a really fine tightrope. And it's not, I mean, a lot of us are and that's why we got together as this group because people were contacting us saying, "Hey, what are we gonna do? You know, soon I'm gonna have to close my door. What are we gonna do?" And we all have enough respect to each other within the community as kind of like, "Well, let's see what we can present and see what we can come up with to hopefully come up with a solution." I think as business owners, we have earned the right to be able to police our own business. We have paid for that right to police our own business. We have committed to police our own business and, you know, we're gonna do everything we can to keep our business safe. We do that already. We do that with food temperatures. We do that with rotation of products. We do that with sanitation and things and things like that. We do that because we don't want to have a knock against us because then people don't want to come back. Now, a lot of people are concerned that, okay, we open to 100% capacity, that all these restaurants are just gonna be jammed with people. It's not been proven that way in the communities around us. In the communities around us that had opened at 100%, they don't have alliance like they used to have. People are policing themselves, they're not comfortable coming out yet. Some are, some aren't. So it's not like there's this mass attack of people coming to the businesses. You know, some people are excited to get out. I mean, they're going stir-crazy at home. So, I mean, that's where we're coming from as a business. We're just trying, we're trying to stay afloat. We want to be here when it's all done. We want to be somewhere where people can go, get out, be part of the community. I mean, Vermillion is community, our businesses. I mean, we like to feel that we welcome people as family. You know, as I stated, I know every one of you that's on the council. Every one of you have come to our businesses. I can tell you I've got at least three doctors that are coming into our businesses now. They feel safe enough to come into our businesses. So I think we, yes, there's some scary things out there, but we have to let the businesses be able to survive. I guess it kind of wraps up what I'm going to say because I think I spoke probably for about 10 minutes today at the noon meeting and, you know, we know we're all in this together, but we as a business do need to be able to survive. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Is there anyone else at City Hall that wishes to speak?
Hello, everyone. My name is Colin Lind. I represent myself, but also I'm part and operator of the Pizza Ranch. So I just want to sum up a little bit with all this. We've spent 60 days of fine-tuning our operations to provide an opportunity to provide a safe space for team members and guests. So that's forefront in our mind, but we also want to think about the next 60 and 60 years as well. So we are asking again with this piece that we have not forgotten about the seriousness of COVID-19, but also we do know that we need to be able to police ourselves a little bit and have that flexibility and let guests as well as ourselves determine what the result is. If people want to come out, I believe that they should be able to come out as well. Also, if you're looking at other businesses, restaurants are looked at because they're a place to sit and have camaraderie, but also people are finding other places. So you still can go to Walmart and have that camaraderie where you're lingering around gas stations. You can go in, you can get self-serve items, you can serve your own drinks. So things like that that aren't necessarily imposed on other businesses, I think we need to consider when looking at this ordinance. But lastly, food safety is our guru. Guest safety is our guru. It's what we spent years and years doing. We're training. That exam that we have to take, it's 10 hours of rigorous material to make sure we have food safety, chemical safety, as well as foodborne illness understood. So the great part about it is the restaurants and businesses on this group here, we firmly believe that we know how to help serve the guests and protect our guests as well as we don't want to cause any harm, but we do have to move forward and make progress. So sometimes those steps are awkward and uncomfortable and we've taken those steps these last 60 days, but we're looking for a couple more steps as well. So that's all I have though. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Colin. Is there anyone else in the audience at City Hall that wishes to speak?
Doesn't look like there's any right now, Kelsey.
Seeing none, James, do you have comments to share?
Yes, I do. I have a few comments to read here. The first comment is from Julia Wessel, 1104 East Cherry Street, number 129. She states, "Walmart has stopped providing hand sanitizer to the public since the last council meeting. They are the problem. Restaurant eating is optional. Walmart is not." Should I continue?
Yes, please continue.
Okay. Alexis, Alexi says, "I agree. Why can't I have hand sanitizer and safety at the grocery store? I need to shop and have a family. Even the restaurants give us that." And then Katie Beam, 318 Prunestus Avenue, says, "If the ordinance were dropped and the businesses signed a letter saying that they agree COVID-19 is not going anywhere and they would continue to take safety precautions in light of COVID, what would those safety measures be and how would patrons know the safety measures, know the safety measures the establishments are following? Would businesses be required to post signage or somehow communicate to patrons?"
Thank you, James. Are we aware of any other public comment before we turn it over to the council?
No, it doesn't look like there's any here at City Hall.
Thank you. Seeing none, I will turn it to the council for discussion. Rich?
Let's see. I am personally, in favor of removing all restrictions, but that would put me out of reach to the most of the restaurants. Both my wife and I are compromised or at risk because of our age, we're old. Secondly, both have compromised immune systems. So with all restrictions removed, there is nothing to ensure that I would be safe in any place that has a public meeting. What I tried to do and offered is a modification to the proposal to provide a safe space at the various restaurants or establishments based on availability, not as an absolute requirement, but a request. And the way I worded it was basically saying, "Please provide a safe space for people like my wife and myself to come and eat and be reasonably safe from the COVID-19 infection." I know we can't be completely. And I'd like to ask, oh, say, Jim, would it be an inconvenience if you had eight tables or a couple of tables that still maintain the proper spacing and would still not have condiments and paper menus, things that would make it safe for someone like myself and my wife to enjoy a good meal and still visit all the friends that we miss?
I think those are, I mean, those are guidelines that we could live within. I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, those are things that we could maybe work out, you know, to do that. I mean, you know, would we need somebody when they come in to say, "Hey, you know, we need a special seating" or something like that? Because how do you identify a person that walks in the door and just, you know, without signaling them out or look like you're discriminating against them? But I think that we could definitely have a section on the restaurant where this is the social distance seating area, you know, and not have the paper menus and those sort of things. I mean, I could see that being workable. I mean, you know, at least that gets us to more than 50%.
I would actually like to add that, okay, that in doing that, which I 100% agree with...
Monica, could you speak? Could you come up to the microphone? I'm sorry, it's pretty difficult for us on Zoom if you're not right at the mic.
I just wanted to add that I agree with Jim completely on that. It's just that I feel that in doing that, we would have to give up one or probably two additional tables. So instead of giving up one table, we'd be giving up three. So, I mean, I'm just saying that that would also happen, so it would still affect our bottom line if we got full, but, I mean, I just thought I would bring that to your attention as well, that it would be more than just a one-table sacrifice.
But I'd be willing to do it.
Yes.
Right, right.
Howard, did you have a question or a comment?
I have a statement. I think it's, I've been thinking about this all day, and I think it's time that we deny this second reading. And if John can answer a question, I think that Vermillion and Brookings are the only two towns left in the state to have restrictions at this time or considering restrictions. And Brookings are meeting on theirs this week. Is that correct, John?
Yes, the only, I'll say the only two first-class cities that I'm aware of and also particularly more so in the eastern part of the state that have any sort of restrictions.
I will say, John, today on the call with the other first-class mayors, both, besides Brookings, saying that they were planning, I think, on maintaining theirs into July, at least at this point, both Huron and Rapid City said that they did still have some restrictions. But they didn't detail what they were. Go ahead, Howard.
I think that we have asked our businesspeople to make a sacrifice. Now it's time for the townspeople to make the sacrifice and follow the restrictions set out by the federal government to restrict a social being but still let the restaurants be open because I know it's pretty hard as a former businessman to make ends meet. And if, you know, I hate to see if we start losing businesses. That would be tragic for Vermillion. We're trying to get more business in. And so I would be really in favor of not approving the second reading of this ordinance. And I will make it as a motion.
While we're still in discussion, I guess if there is a second, I can recognize it where we can continue to discuss.
Second, Howard, because I think that it's time, even though, even though this is such a scary time, that businesses are businesses and they're here to make money and I believe that they will be as careful as they can be, that they're just not gonna go and jam pack all the place shut just because they can for now anyways. So, yes, so I agree with what Howard said completely. And what Jim and Monica, thank you everybody for coming. You too, Colin.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion, Julia. I also wanted to point out that we do have Vicki Walker and Chelsea Westner and Megan O'Connell who spoke to us at noon on the Zoom if you've got any questions. Go ahead, Julia.
Thank you. I have a couple thoughts. First, I want to echo what Rich was saying, that one of my concerns is that by not ensuring any regulation or restrictions, that we're actually pushing people away from frequenting these businesses who might otherwise have felt more comfortable to come with those restrictions in place, given that the CDC still is very strongly recommending social distancing as the primary way of dealing with this virus. I think these are the very appropriate restrictions and I think that's something that would make me feel safer considering to attend as someone who has a high-risk infant at home. But second of all, sort of more, I guess philosophically, my concern more broadly is that this is a concern of public health and that's our responsibility as a government. And I'm very concerned about placing that burden on businesses because if we let go of these regulations and people become ill, it is no longer our responsibility or we have essentially let go of that responsibility of public health for our community and relinquish that to the businesses. And so that means it's on our businesses to ensure the health of our citizens because it's not just the people who are frequenting the restaurants, it's not just the people who are working at the restaurants, but anyone who comes in contact with those people afterwards, whether it's you're going out to dinner and then you take your child to daycare the next day or go to work at a different location and so on. And ultimately then, it's the business community's responsibility to be able to self-implement the CDC guidelines and stop the virus in a way that we would then relinquish that opportunity to do so. And so I have some practical concerns, like I said, similar to Rich in terms of going there myself or recommending to friends and constituents to frequent restaurants. But I also have a moral dilemma on giving up that responsibility that we have and putting that burden on business owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Further comments from the council?
Tom has a question.
Go ahead, Tom.
First of all, I need to say, and I apologize, Howard, I couldn't hear your motion. I wear hearing aids and I'm sorry, you're way off mic and you gotta get closer or something. So I don't even know what the motion is right now, but I'll get that from Mike later. But I want to pick up on what Julia just said. This is indeed a public health issue and we, there's no question that we love our businesses. And I'm surprised there isn't a particular business representative here this evening, but we're not against business, we're against keeping your customers. And we don't know who's been to which... who's been to which restaurant or which place, and who they have met, and what town they came to Vermillion from. We heard earlier today at a noon meeting, and it was after Jim and Monica had presented and then left, from the medical community. And I don't know if he stayed for that, and I don't think he did.
I actually was under the impression that it was going to be tonight.
Yeah. Well, I'm glad that, I'm glad Dr. Walker's here tonight, too. But there was not confidence in the overall national data that's been given out. Now, Clay County's part of that. So there's still a huge question mark as to how reliable is some of this? Because we're apparently at a level off period right now, we think. I again repeated that Clay County is an island. And I was corrected by one of the medical people about, wait a minute, we do have a lot of commuters from other towns around us. And all the counties around us are noticeably higher than Clay County with their problems. There were three categories discussed in the medical field about risk. And high risk, some risk, and very low risk. High risk included indoor eating. So an option would be more outdoor seating, such as Cafe Brulee has. I believe the Brick House might be able to do something outside if you aren't already. I know someone on the west edge of town wanted to know if he could serve food in his parking lot, just so he could do some business. We're not against that kind of thing at this stage, I don't believe. But given what was said at noon, just opening this all up and hoping and trusting that you're going to take care of your customers that are going to go traveling and meeting other people, that's a risk. The public health issue is, I believe, a compelling government interest, that we are here to look after everybody. And any limitations that we pose are being done on a narrow, tailored-to-individual groups. So we're trying to do our job. We know you're trying to survive. We feel for you. It's this, it's this damn virus, and we've got to be safe. So could someone please repeat Howard's motion, so I know what it is we're discussing?
Alderman Wilson moved to deny second reading of ordinance 1414, which was seconded by Humphrey.
Thank you, Mike.
Is there any further discussion from the council? Steve?
Kelsey, I am leaning toward supporting Howard's motion. However, I want to point out to the business folks that are here, you know, that the safety regulations that you adhere to are state and federal regulations that are, come down from government. And that government, as several Tom and others have pointed out, is a government responsibility to secure public safety. And I'm sure you realize that that is the impetus behind the emergency ordinances up until this point. We also know from the experts that we have at USD, and the news that the safest places are socially distant from one another, are outdoors and relatively distant from one another, and the riskiest places are where we are gathered close together indoors. And that means restaurants and bars. So what you are asking us is to open up the riskiest spaces in our town to people. At this point, because we have had no new cases for a couple of weeks, I am willing to support the motion and give this a try to see what the effects are of open indoor spaces, you know, no capacity restrictions. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Steve. Catherine?
Okay, I scribbled a bunch of notes down, so I'm going to try to speak coherently. The first thing I'd like to do is to thank Jim and Monica and the other business owners for organizing this feedback in this way. I want to acknowledge that it is unprecedented for all of these businesses to come together and make such a joint statement about their predicament. I think that that is important to acknowledge. And I want to thank you for your time and your effort in gathering that feedback to bring to the council. Nobody wants to downplay the economic hardship that has been placed on small businesses. And the, nobody wants to say that that's not happening. We all know that our economy is suffering and that our businesses are suffering, and that we want things to go back to normal to. I want to respond to something specific that both Jim and Monica and the gentleman from Pizza Ranch spoke about, which was the meeting of federal requirements in regards to, you know, food handling and serving. I don't think anybody is questioning that the businesses are up to snuff with their standards, or that they weren't meeting those requirements in the first place. You know, even the places where the highest outbreaks have been in meatpacking plants and stuff, they are all meeting their federal requirements for food handling. It's not about food handling or service. It's about, as Steve stated, it's about people being in close proximity to each other indoors, and whether that's people working close, side by side, or eating close to each other in close quarters indoors. That's where the risks really are. And that's why there's so much guidance about that social distancing is the way to combat this virus. I like that so many people have emphasized that this is a public health issue. And one of the things that came up in our discussion this afternoon with the medical providers and the task force is that it is primarily an issue of public health and public health education, and making sure that people have the information that they need to make good choices. And, you know, I liked what the gentleman from Pizza Ranch emphasized, is that with the 60 days that we have had closures, people have gotten used to doing things in a different way. And we've been able to practice better distancing behaviors and better business behaviors that keep people safer under this situation. And so I am glad that we've had this ordinance in place so that people can learn those behaviors. I am also conflicted, as Julia said, about who is responsible then for that public safety and that public health and that public health education. I feel like it's maybe, I don't know if I would call it irresponsible, but it is not fair for the government to place that on the small businesses and say, now it's your job to, you know, educate the public and be the keepers of public health. I think that that is a, that's the government's job. It shouldn't be the small businesses' job to, to maintain the public health in that way. That's a burden that I, I don't feel good about placing on your shoulders. One thing I want to emphasize that came out of our discussion at noon with the, with the medical providers and the task force is that, that this is not a black and white issue. This is not a, you know, everything's open 100%, or everything's closed down 100%. Or COVID is here and everything's shut down, or COVID is gone and everything's normal. Like, there's not that. We need to be in the middle of this, in a middle ground where we are focusing on public health and safety measures that people are learning and practicing and following, that are based in data and statistics and science and rational thought. So I don't think that I could support abandoning this ordinance entirely. I think what I would like to see is something that we could put in place that would require clear, you know, I don't know if it's signage, or if it's restrictions for social distancing or masks, or what we could do that would then be the government taking on that responsibility to keep our citizens safe, but allow businesses to operate more under their own, their own will, but also keep the public informed and educated about how to best protect themselves. So I don't think I can support your motion, Howard. I would be more comfortable supporting something which is a severe reduction in this ordinance to something where we still are requiring even clear signage about what kind of mitigation measures are being held in locations so that people can make good decisions about where the safest place is for them to be based on their risk factors as somebody who's older or, you know, compromised or whatever. So I'm sorry I can't support this motion, but I do think that there's a place for middle ground in this discussion.
I'll go to Howard and then Rich.
I, you know, if signage and that type of thing is something that needs to be done, you know, I'd be willing to put that into my motion. One thing, too, is that we read every two weeks. If we notice an increase, and that this has caused the virus to increase in Clay County, we can always go back with another motion, another ordinance to clamp it down again. I think it's time that we give the businesspeople the same opportunity we give the public. The businesspeople have to have a chance to make a living. How many more weeks can they operate at no profit or negative operation? And so we're protecting one group of people and putting awful financial burden on the other group of people. I think there's got to be a happy medium, and I would be willing to look at that.
Rich, and then I'll go to Julia.
Thank you. As I had mentioned earlier about me in the compromised situation, I think the city has done a very good job of trying their best to educate everybody in the city, the city government, that is. I also think the television has done an exceptional job of reminding us of all the dangers and what to do, and our businesses have responded as best they can. I'm saying all these things because I'm in favor of Howard's proposal. I think it'll work. And I don't believe that we should feel guilty about giving it to the businesses, because I don't think we are. If people are not intelligent enough at this point to understand the risks, it's their problem, really, not ours. The city has done well. The government has done well, both state and federal. And I think people have been well-educated at this point. Thank you.
Rich, I do want to respond to that before, and then I will recognize you, Julia. I just want to be, one of the issues with public health is that people, no matter how well-educated, in an infectious disease situation, can be infected. And that's the only reason we're even having this conversation. If this was something like smoking, where only the people making the bad public health decision were being affected directly, I think we would have a very different conversation. And I lost someone this week to COVID, a person who was in a care facility getting over a medical procedure. That person was not out at restaurants. They were not, not social distancing at barbecues. They were infected by an asymptomatic person that came to them. And that's how infectious disease works. Again, we would not be having this conversation if people could just only worry about themselves. But unfortunately, that's not how this is being passed. So many people are carrying it, and they don't even know it. And that's, that's the issue. And that's why we're having this conversation. And that's not to say whether we're going forward with this or not. But I feel like that needs to be very clear, and especially when we're saying that people understand this disease. Anybody that says that you can stay away from it just by you not making bad decisions doesn't understand this disease. Julia?
Thank you. I want to echo some of what Kelsey said, but I also really want to go back to the practicality of the ordinance. Howard was suggesting that we deny this ordinance completely, but then also suggested that if we see more cases, then we can clamp down again. But given the timelines of how ordinance ordinances work, that could take as much as, you know, two to four weeks. If something happens immediately after a council meeting, two weeks for our first reading, two weeks for a second reading, and then we're four weeks out. I think it's much more sensible to consider the fact that in the ordinance that we have written, we have much more than the capacity and distancing concerns that the businesses brought up. And several of the things that we have written in the ordinance are things that it seems that those businesses are very willing to continue to partake in, including wearing masks and more aggressive sanitizing, posting signage on sanitizing. And to go back to our constituent comments that Katie Bean was talking about, and that we've now spoken about a few times, providing signage. And I think we can include both signage on the public health information that the CDC offers, but also each business could provide some information about what steps they are taking specifically. And so I don't think it's the best, neither practical use nor, nor moral point to deny the ordinance in its entirety, but rather amend it either in the way that Rich was suggesting early on, although I'm not sure that that is very effective to have special section. But I would much rather see us strike one part of the ordinance rather than strike the ordinance in its entirety.
Steve?
Yeah, I wanted to ask Howard if he would be open to a, and actually ask some of the business representatives if they would be open to a, an ordinance that continues, but with a requirement, as Catherine suggested, a requirement that employees wear masks when they are in close proximity of patrons, that there are signs with the CDC guidelines. And I kind of like Julia's suggestions, that would be in your own best interest to list what kind of steps you're taking. And so I guess I would ask Howard first if those changes would be okay with you, and then ask the business folks what you think of those.
I think that those changes would be good. I'm not sure that we'd do it on this or start a whole new ordinance, which would be another two-week delay before it was enforced. So I guess we'd have to ask John and Jim whether we could kind of get the ordinance as it is now and add new things to it and pass it and make it effective right away. But I think that if we can give the businesses the opportunity to be able to brace themselves, I think they'll do a good job. You're always going to have somebody that is going to follow the regulations. But that can be, if we pass this ordinance, it would still mean that we have people that don't want to follow it. So I'd be unwilling to discuss the options.
I have a question.
Okay. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you very much. I'd like to point out again that as the current, excuse me, the ordinance that just recently, very recently expired, we would have, under this ordinance, the 60-days period to call for reconsideration, or if need be, we could call a special meeting to do something like that. something like that. This affects so many different people and so many different groups. I can tell you how many people are disappointed that the class reunions this summer have been postponed to 2021. There's a great disappointment there. We not only love businesses, but we love the tax revenues that come in to help us serve the citizens of Vermillion. So I, I wanted to point that out. I would say that given state law, this ordinance is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of the city. And with that, I offer a substitute motion to approve second reading of the motion as it stands and hope for a second.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, I have a question for all of us business owners to reply to a few minutes ago from the council, from Howard.
Oh. The motion dies for lack of a second. Before, one moment, and we'll have Steve's question answered from the audience. I did want to say to Howard, and I just wanted to kind of jump back to Jim. My understanding from talking to Jim today was that if we were to strike the two or several of the sections in the second reading, that we would likely have to have a third reading no sooner than five days from now, so like next Monday, because it would be a substantial enough change that we would not be able to pass it tonight. If we were to make a smaller change, like in the percentage occupancy, that would still be okay to do tonight. And it, it is difficult. There's a lot of different pieces to this, and I would have loved to have maybe greater discussion about this. That's one of my great frustrations. You know, I certainly haven't had contact from anyone in the business community about this that is now reaching out. I've had a number of people reach out with their support, and I think we had to put this on a first reading so it would be available for us when the other one expired, and I think we would have been open to maybe trying some more creative things. And now we're kind of in this position where we either go or we don't, or we try and wordsmith an entire ordinance piece by piece tonight, or we face the very real threat of a lawsuit against the city. And none of those are really great options. And, and so to, just to answer Tom, you know, I just want you to know that were this not the situation and we weren't facing some of these other things, I would have absolutely seconded the continuation of this. Because again, until 10:30 last night, I had no feedback on it at all, so.
Did Monica have a comment in the audience?
I think she was going to respond to Steve's question.
Uh, it's actually Howard, or was it Steve? I'm sorry. Do I need to step off there? I, okay. I just wanted to say that I, you know, all of your comments, we, we listened to and we really appreciated those. We did hear, I did hear like several people mention their concern about adding to our shoulders the responsibility of the public's health, and I can speak for all of the restaurant owners, I believe, in saying that we already bear that burden. We, we already, I actually just looked up some figures, and there's 48 million cases, according to the CD website, of foodborne illnesses every year. When we hand you a sandwich, we have to be sure that there's not a foodborne illness on that sandwich. I do understand that we've already talked about it and it's a matter of complicating, and I understand that that's a different sort of responsibility, but we're already taking, we've already agreed to take this public safety on just by being a restaurant business, just by being who we are. So I, I just wanted to say that. I also wanted to say that I personally, and Jim, I believe, would be willing to definitely make, you know, to agree with mask wearing and some of these other provisions. It's just impossible to open above a third capacity without being six feet from another table or a chair. I think in most of these small restaurants, that's the biggest issue. So the 50% really wouldn't do much at all for us.
Right.
Well, 50 still, still.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and I understand, you know, maybe tabling the, the ordinance for, I know you mentioned five days or Monday, but honestly, every day we lose our income, and honestly, you don't. You know, you still make the same money, and we don't. So it's another week of nothing for us, and it's just maybe Wednesday, if we can all make a sacrifice, or some sort of limited table, and we can work hard on coming to an agreement. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
And just to be clear, there is no ordinance in place currently. There is no regulations in place at this moment. Is that correct, John?
Yes, that's correct, Mary. May I, Mary, offer a comment or potentially a suggestion?
Yes.
I'm gathering potentially there's some, some of the concern maybe is more so in what is number two of ordinance 1414, which kind of, which one of the key things I think that is the concern, at least as I'm picking up on it, is the limiting the percentage of occupancy to 50%, 75%, whatever, pick your magic number. But I have, my sense of it is there's probably more things in section two. I mean, it's a panacea from A to S of different things that are required there. There's probably more that's in agreement than there is not in agreement. Perhaps a way to look at this is maybe we can try to visit with some of these individuals and some council members and develop a resolution that incorporates a lot of those public education things, the things that I think a lot of our restaurants said that they're already willing to do or they're doing, to help compete or complete a little bit of that public education piece, encourage those aspects that the layperson understands will help with the prevention of the spread of the disease, but yet allow some of the businesses to operate. I mean, if you, if that's the way that we want to go, and I'm going to look at Mr. McCullough here to see, I guess if we had a resolution which included a lot of those things, it's not as binding as an ordinance would take the same length of time to adopt or pass. We, we might be able to go that route. Would that be reasonable and have a special meeting in a couple days, which might include some of those? Is that a possibility? I'm just thinking out loud.
The thing about a resolution is that it's not enforceable from the standpoint that somebody who's in violation of the resolution can receive a ticket for it and so on. But a resolution is what I think some of the cities in South Dakota did do in lieu of an ordinance. And so if that's what the city council would like to do, that's perfectly acceptable from a legal standpoint.
Thank you, Jim. Julia?
Thank you. So I am willing to go in any creative way. I think what John was suggesting sounds reasonable. But looking at this, really, as John said, it seems like we actually have more in agreement than disagreement, and that really, that what we would like to strike, or, and I don't want to say like, but what the consensus appears to be in terms of striking on the ordinance is actually the capacity. So I wonder for Jim, if we just changed that number percent, would that be too much of a, a change in the ordinance to have to require a third reading? And if it's not the case, what if we just changed the percent to 100% and we say that you can't have a capacity over 100% and then everything else stays the same? We haven't really changed much of the language aside from that number. And so maybe that would allow us to keep the ordinance, move into effect more immediately, but strike, really strike the capacity requirement.
Jim?
It was discussed when you adopted this ordinance 1414 on first reading, the possibility that it may change between first reading and second reading, and it was believed at the time that if the capacity level was changed from 50% to lesser restricted, that a second reading could be held tonight without postponing it. I received another version of an ordinance this afternoon. It looks like it came from Rich. It was John that sent it to me, and in that one, all references to percentages are eliminated, and instead, businesses are required to provide areas for social distancing or alternatively post a sign stating no social distancing area provided in this facility. And that is contained in the very first section of the ordinance. Everything else in one, A, B, C, and D is unchanged. Then in two, it said any businesses within the city of Vermillion identified in one above, which are open to the public. It's, instead of shall, it says are encouraged to provide a social distancing area. That encouraging type of language is more in the realm of, of a resolution, as John had suggested. A, C, and D under two are still there in Rich's proposal. B and E are eliminated. F, G, H, I, J are unchanged. K is left intact with the elimination of the last sentence. L is left intact with the elimination of the last sentence. M has a customer seating in theaters and similar businesses shall have a section reduced for social distancing with certain seats marked as not available due to social distancing, and the remainder of the ordinance is the same. When I received that, I believed that that was such a significant change that that could not be voted on tonight. That would have to be done at a later, later meeting. But those are the changes that are in that particular ordinance. So if you change the percentage to less restrictive, you could have a second reading tonight. If you don't want to have the percentage of capacity in the ordinance any longer and go something more along with what Rich has proposed, you would have to have a second reading, and it would have to be at least five days after, there'd have to be a notice published in the paper like you would for a, a meeting, that we have to follow the open meetings notice requirements, and then five days, there'd have to be a special meeting, and then you could adopt this. Or you could do something like what John suggested and just go with a resolution instead. I don't know if I answered Julia's question very well, but...
Julia, do you have a follow-up, and then I'll get to you, Catherine, sorry.
Yeah, what I'm wondering is if we keep everything in terms of the language, but change the percentage to 100%, which would be less restrictive, would that be something that we can pass tonight? Which essentially, it practically means we're taking it out because 100%, they wouldn't be allowed to go over 100% anyway, but it allows us to keep that language in there and so that we're not making a large change in the ordinance.
Jim?
I'm, I'm, I'm just looking at the ordinance here to see, I'm looking at B of two, at two B into E. So we would be, under Julia's suggestion or proposal or hypothetical, we would be eliminating two B. And we'd be keeping everything else.
No, we would be changing 50% to 100% in two B. That's it.
And two E.
And two E, sorry.
I do believe additionally, the businesses have been advocating against the six foot. They don't believe that they can do 100% if they have to maintain the six foot. So if, I mean, I don't think from their perspective, one of those really functions without the other.
Right. So I would want to know from Jim if we could move 50% to 100% and strike any of the six-foot distance language and still have, be able to pass this tonight. Are we allowed to speak?
I'm, I'm, I'm going to read for a minute, so if anybody wants to talk, let them.
Kelsey, do we have people here that would love to speak if you want to?
Do we have consent from the council to let someone from the audience speak at this point?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Another piece in this ordinance is about no self-serve salad bars or buffets, which also impacts us with self-serve drinks. So right now, we're serving drinks for the guests, the food to the guests. Over in Yankton, what they've implemented at their Pizza Ranch and many Pizza Ranches as well, is they still allow self-serve options with gloves and signs and sanitizers, so guests have that option. Every 30 minutes, we're, they're rotating out their utensils as well, as well as every, if you, if you know Pizza Ranch life, every 20 minutes is the life of our pizzas, so it usually happens a lot quicker than that. So I guess my, my concern as well is, at least looking at the self-serve drinks, I think that's a, a no-brainer option to be able to have the guests serve their own drinks at our soda machines, as you can go to Casey's down the street and get your own drink right now as well. And I think with the buffet too, they're finding high success at Yankton. The first day they opened, they had about 80 guests come in for the buffet. Only one of them chose not to wear gloves. They did sanitizer, they chose not to wear a glove, but having gloves readily available, as well as with the information seeing that it's not necessarily as much of a contact issue as it is a aerosolized issue. That's something that I want you guys to consider on top of everything is with, you know, for us, it's a lot of man-hours when we're serving the buffet, and it's not the same experience our guests used to have, and they're choosing not to come back because it's, it might be the same great food, but it's not the same Pizza Ranch. When they can go to Yankton and they can get a self-serve buffet with still safety precautions in place. So I'm fine with having our tables set apart, but I still think we need to look at other options for self-service because we still have self-service in Vermillion, just not in our restaurants.
Julia?
I'm not sure I'm quite ready on, on the buffets, but I do wonder in, in reading the ordinance, if the self-service drinks are included, because it says salad bars and self-service buffet shall not be permitted, but I'm not convinced from that reading of it that that would include self-service condiments like drinks, and drinks.
The, the guidance we received were that we could not have our drinks served by the guests. So when we had the fire marshal come in as well, they, they had the expectation asking us, can guests get their drinks? And we told them that if they can't, then we'll, we'll serve them.
I do perhaps want to revisit what John had said. There does seem to be enough variety of opinion among the council on a lot of very specific details at this point that I feel like our ability to parse this out right now is, is pretty difficult. The, the sections that we're talking about taking out are really the meat of everything. I mean, from everything we know about this disease, as Colin pointed out, I mean, it's, it's... it's the aerosolizing that is the danger in the enclosed spaces. You know, the CDC guidance is super clear on that. And so if we're going to take that out, I'm just not sure if it's worth us spending more time parsing out the other little details that we're leaving in. That's just my thought on it, but maybe something like a resolution could be worked out. Catherine?
So if we were to deny this ordinance tonight and not continue with it, the idea is we would have a special meeting to enact an ordinance, or it would be two weeks, or what would the plan be?
John, could you reiterate your suggestion?
My suggestion was perhaps a resolution. As Jim pointed out, a resolution doesn't have the citing measure for it, so somebody could be cited for violating a resolution. And I think it's fair the public should also know, we've had no citations issued. So people have been following the rules that are in place. So there have been no citations that have been issued. So a resolution could be done with one meeting, one reading, and it would not be something that a fine could be assessed for. Sometimes items like that, such as some of the education pieces, the promoting, some of the more public health-type mechanisms might be easier or as easily accomplished via a resolution as they might be in an ordinance. That's why I'd offer that as a suggestion, a little bit quicker, only have to have one meeting and one adoption versus the two that it takes for an ordinance, and those have to be at least five days apart. Just trying to speed things along if that was the wish of the council.
Howard? Oh, go. Oh, I'm sorry. No, go ahead, Catherine, then Howard.
I would just, if, if that is the direction we hope to go, I would want to work with the businesses and the group that came forward and spoke so eloquently about their needs and try to form something with goodwill towards them and get input in that. So I just, I think if that's the direction we're going to go, I want to assure the businesses that we definitely want it to be a conversation.
And Howard?
I would agree with Catherine. That's what I was going to say, that if we're ready to do a resolution, that we have a committee that work up the writing or the wording of it and that businesses are included in that discussion and that committee that does that. We only need maybe three, four people to woodsmith it for us, but have all parties involved in it.
So we would have the option of doing something like that, having them work on it over the next few days and then we could have a special meeting to look at that. I would also encourage if we go that route, there are quite a few other businesses that are under this ordinance that were not included, that I know were part of the survey that we received from the Vermillion Chamber and Development Corporation, our hairdressers, nail salons, places like that, that I think also should have a seat at that table if they're, if we're talking about changes because they are also affected by this ordinance.
This is Jim. I was wondering, in Julia's proposal to go to 100% so that a second reading could take place tonight, was there an intent then to eliminate the minimum six-foot distancing requirements?
Well, from my perspective, I was looking at what can we do to pass something tonight? So I think we're looking to eliminate that section as well. So if that's not possible, I understand, but yeah, the intention would be to not include this six-foot distancing as well.
Then in my opinion, it probably has changed enough that you would be required to have a second reading at a later time because it's, if, if, if I'm understanding things correctly, you're making your suggestion very close to what Rich proposed this afternoon.
So it looks, it looks like either way, we would be looking at a special meeting potentially like next Monday, regardless of which direction we went on that. Rich?
Kelsey, I was going to say the same thing. It looked like both of them would, could be resolved in a week. The advantage of taking Julia's suggestion, or what I should say is modifying it as I suggested, we'd also be able to vote on that in the third reading and have it in the same length of time as we would a resolution. So, and that advantage is most of the work's something is done with that because it's not a lot to be changed.
Ask a question and make a point of order?
Go ahead, Tom.
If we approve second reading, even with perhaps some resolution that's allowable, it would have become effective immediately rather than going without an ordinance at all. But we can still hold a special meeting very soon after second reading is approved. So why go with nothing and then a special meeting? Or go with the second reading tonight and then have a special meeting to iron out the, these, these various differences, which is why I made my motion, a substitute motion. My point of order is, we have a motion on the floor.
We do. We have a motion by Howard and a second by Brian. That motion would be to deny the second reading. And my assumption would be is if we decided to go with that, then there would be either a discussion about a resolution to follow or nothing to follow. But John or Jim, I think we would need to dispense of this first before we decided to instruct staff to help craft a resolution. Is that correct?
Yes, with the motion on the floor, which is to deny second reading of the ordinance 1414 as it currently exists. That, if, if that fails, then you're back to determining what you want to do as far as a second reading on another variety of 1414 and that would take a later special meeting. If you wanted to do it in a few days with the appropriate notices for the open meetings requirements. If the motion on the floor were to pass, then there is no more 1414. And then your option is to either come up with some entirely new type of COVID ordinance or the resolution that John had suggested.
Okay, is there any further discussion, maybe consensus building? I don't know, before we take a vote on this so we know what direction we're going?
I would, I would just like, sorry, I just want to say.
Sorry. Do we have consent of the council to recognize someone in the audience?
Yes. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to say, Stephanie and Howard, I really, well, I appreciate all of your comments, but you know, the comment you mentioned about maybe having a committee, because as a business owner, I feel like we're sitting here listening to this where it's kind of you against us. And I never understood why we haven't worked together on this. I, I really think that that would be the solution. And we're willing to bend, you know, and we want to make things work. So I, we just are hoping that you can work with us. That's all I have to say.
If there's no further discussion from the council, we have a motion and a second to deny second reading. All in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll. And just to clarify, an aye is to deny.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Sorensen?
No.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wives.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second reading is denied. At this point, to continue the discussion, if there's any thoughts on going forward with the resolution, we can discuss that now. We also have a number of items about parks and recreation to discuss. Howard?
Let's do park and rec now and give ourselves a time to kind of think about how we want to do this and then do that after park and rec. And so that, that was my choice.
Okay, I think that makes a lot of sense. Is Jim there?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Jim, if you could, in your best attempt at brevity, try and list the things that we need to give you feedback on. We would greatly appreciate it.
Once again, thank you, Mayor. We discussed the Parks and Rec facilities amenities programming on the May 18th, council noon and evening, as well as the meeting today at noon to find out, is this your direction on what you would like to go for parks and recreation facilities and programming and whatnot? Again, we've tried to work with you guys as far as getting your input and what you want for the community and so. That is why we continue to come forward to get your blessings and to be on the same page with everyone. I have four things. What we're looking at here is the Parks and Rec has questions on, and that's the golf course restrooms and the park restrooms. A lot of people are using the parks, a lot of people are being outside, as you guys have heard. It's a positive place to be and we're starting to have people that would like to use the restroom facilities out there. So what we have in place right now is the increased sanitization of the, the restrooms. We're going to try and clean them twice a day. We will have signage inside and outside of the restroom facilities, but we would like to get those facilities open for the public. Not only for the parks, but again, at the, probably even the bigger issue is over at the golf course. With the golf course being as large as, over 135 acres and only having the clubhouse restrooms open, it causes difficulties for some people. So that is one question that we have. Are we allowed, with your blessings, to open up the park restrooms and the blessed golf course restrooms?
Is there anyone at City Hall that has any comments on this or should we go through the whole list first? I don't know. I guess, is there anyone else at City Hall? That's a good question.
Yes, there are people here. I think they're waiting to see what happens on the resolution or whatever for the restaurants and such.
Okay. Well, I think if it's okay, let's do discussion and then if they're at the end of going through the list, if we've got public comments, hopefully we can get to those as well.
All right, I'll, I'll try and keep moving here. The playgrounds has been another one that we've been approached by the public with and park shelters. I think we've heard that this evening already. Just kind of need some direction with that one. As a quick summary, the, on May 20th, the CDC published a report on the COVID-19 that is less likely transmitted through surfaces and contact and more of a respiratory disease. I'm sure you guys have all seen that, but just wanted to make sure you're aware of it again. Again, we would open them with signage adjacent to the playgrounds. Some of that signage would look similar to what we've been using prior. Here is one version of it. I don't know if we can see that or not from our top there, but basically a caution sign that we'd have that around there. Also, we have a nice, working with the, the National Parks and Recreation Association, they have kind of a different, maybe a little bit softer sign that says who should use the playground, who shouldn't use the playground. If you're not feeling well, practice social distancing and whatnot. So there's a couple of different examples of what we can go with there. The third one is the basketball courts. That's kind of a tricky one there because basketball is, we're going to say, more of a close contact activity. However, there's also a lot of people that just like to go out and play a game of horse or shoot baskets and they're not able to do that as well. I don't have a great example how to police that, but it has been brought to our attention that they would like to have their, themselves and their, their children come out and use the, the basketball courts. And last but not least, again, we've mentioned this in the previous ones, that the baseball and softball games, both of those organizations have presented us with a COVID-19 protocols, policies, procedures in place for players, fans, and coaches. As they move forward, it's closer to the season here. We originally put out the June 15th as the date when they could start playing baseball games and you guys were going to evaluate that at a later time and this would be that time we were going to look at it again. What we're proposing them to do is that if it's okay with you, we would take those protocols in place and place them on the Parks and Recreation webpage so that everyone could see it for both baseball and softball. That would have those protocols in place for all players and parents of said players if they would like to have that in person, they like in a hard copy of it. And just wanted to say on that one, since this has opened up since the May 18th, they've done a great job of following these policies and, and guidelines and such. And we were not checking every practice, but when we were out there, it was very obvious that they've all been following these protocols. So that's what I have for you, Mayor, is those four items as quick as I can, so your feedback is greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Jim. Is there anyone in the audience that has a comment specifically on the Parks and Recreation programming?
No, it doesn't look like there is anybody here at City Hall.
Okay. Have there, are there comments, James, about Parks and Recreation, commenting or programming that you could read?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Turning it to the council, I'm going to go with Julia and then Rich and then Howard.
Thank you. And I'll try to be as quick as I can as well. So I think on playgrounds, while I understand that the surface contact is not as much a concern anymore, my bigger concern is that children might not be, be able to read those signs and are likely to be unsupervised, and so I'm not quite ready to do those yet. And since this doesn't have to be by ordinance, but it's a decision, I think that's something that we can wait on for organized sports. I'd like to see the organized sports put in proposals on how they plan to enforce social distancing. I'd like to see spectators from home and away in terms of the games be separated and to create physical distancing. Restrooms, open them up, but make sure they are stocked and cleaned regularly. And I think that was all of the items.
Shelters was the other one that was with the restrooms.
Oh, shelters, yes. Shelters, I'd say, I suggest that those are fine as long as they are reserved for a close group and not for a public meeting space.
Thank you, Julia. Multitasking. Rich?
Jim, are, are the restaurants at the golf course, are they for more than one person at a time?
The inside ones are dual stalls, but the ones on the course are actually just a porta potty, so we recommend only one at a time in those.
Of course. Okay, I, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with that. I'm also in agreement with the basketball because it is an outside sport. Even though you get it close, I don't think it's as big an issue as being something inside. So I'd be in favor of that and favor of opening the restrooms. And I agree with Julia, the shelters for private parties only. Thank you.
Howard?
Well, I was in agreement with all of it because I think we need, we've, we're going to try to open up our restaurants. I think we should open up the playground equipment also to children and maybe put a, an additional signage that children under the age of such and such should be, not will be, but should be accompanied by a parent or an adult because they can read the signs and see how it's done. And I don't think we should shut the playgrounds down for the rest of the summer.
Further discussion from the council? I guess I would, I would agree with Julia on most of the things. I don't think that we have to close the playgrounds for the rest of the summer. I mean, we're, we're going to discuss this again in two weeks. I do feel like with what else we've done tonight, I guess I would like to see. I do feel like with what else we've done tonight, I guess I would like to see what two weeks looks like before we start opening things up for completely unsupervised, non-social distancing on public spaces. One of the things that Catherine's brought up a couple of times is sort of the distance, the difference between an organized sport, for example, where there are adults enforcing different things and looking out for safety, or a park program where there are instructors versus our open equipment areas where we really just have no way of enforcing without forcing our staff into being park police, which they simply can't be. So that's, I would support Julia's. Steve?
I'd like to make a motion. God, is that me that does that? Sorry.
I don't think you're the only one.
This is the only time I get feedback on all of my Zoom meetings, sorry. I'd like to make a motion in support of opening up the golf course and park restrooms, opening up the park shelters to smaller groups, and opening up the baseball and softball for games. And Julia asked a question about concessions. Jim, where are we with that?
We would propose that either there's no concessions, or we would go with, talk to the respective organizations and see if they would like to have concessions out of the concession areas. It doesn't make financial sense. Typically, the concession stands were tied together with the pool concessions, so we'd get bulk orders from, for the candy and hot food product type items, as well as the cold drinks are from another company and such. And it, I just don't think we'd have the volume to, or the need for, to go out and work with those organizations. It wouldn't be financially smart on our side of it. So I would, I would turn it over to the associations to see if they would like to do it or not have that at all.
Okay. So then my motion would include opening up the baseball or softball fields for games with the contingency that away and home fans stay away from each other and that all people are six feet, all non-family groups are practicing social distancing, and no concessions.
All right.
Was there going to be anything on the basketball courts? I think it was.
No basketball for the time being.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Is the playground equipment in there?
I did not include playgrounds.
Okay, it's not in there.
It would still be up for revisiting two weeks from now. Seeing no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
Hi.
Holland?
No.
Humphrey?
No.
Price?
Aye.
Sorenson?
No.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
No.
Mayor, call your wives.
Aye, and I wasn't counting.
It's a tie vote, four to four, so it would fail.
Okay. Motion fails.
So can I, be, be right next to you? So those who voted no, my guess is that Tom, you would prefer not to have much of this open, and that Rich and Howard and Brian would prefer to have everything open.
I prefer, if I may, Mayor?
Go ahead.
I prefer to wait and put this in an actual ordinance that may come up at a special meeting in the future, since right now we don't seem to have an emergency. But we are the leaders of this community. We're not going to pass the buck on to other people. We're going to take a stand. And the buck's been passed way too far down the hill. So I, again, medically speaking, I'm not sure we're ready for this, even though surfaces apparently are safer than they used to be.
Tom, can I ask, is the issue specifically with the bathrooms or with the games?
You talking to me?
Yes.
You know, I resent that, there were times I tried to ask people questions and I got shot down, so I can explain it to you afterwards. I don't have to explain my vote right now.
Well, I guess I'm just trying to figure out if we have the possibility of having a motion that could be supported by the majority of the council. And so if somebody were to make a substitute motion, it would be helpful to know which elements people had issues with.
Well, three other people voted no. Talk to them.
They just, they said that their issue was that we were not opening up the basketball court or the park. So that is the reason that they won't support the motion that Steve made. Steve?
Here's the thing, I, what I'm most concerned about is the golf course restrooms being open because that, in particular, is difficult for the women playing golf, and I've had several requests to have that accomplished, and I think that's a relatively safe thing to do. And I'm also wanting to let the softball and baseball organizations know that they can schedule games. And so I don't want to walk away from here, at least doing those two things. And if I, even if I moved to agree to all of these, we would still be at a four-four tie. So I, I think we're going to have to, someone's going to have to break on not getting everything.
I'll say again, I would wish to see this in, as part of a proposed ordinance.
Howard?
Let's take them one section at a time. Have four motions instead of one motion.
That sounds wonderful. Would you like to get the ball rolling there, Howard?
I'll say move.
Which one are you going with first?
I'll take the bathrooms at the golf course.
Okay, we've got a motion to reopen the bathrooms at the golf course from Howard, a second from Steve. Any further discussion specifically on golf course bathrooms? Rich?
Well, not golf course, but the other bathroom. Didn't Jim ask also for the ones at the park?
Right, we're doing, we're doing one thing at a time.
Okay.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Sorenson?
But to protect the grass, I'll say aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wives.
Aye. Motion passes. Howard?
Move that we open up the bathrooms at the golf course.
We just did that.
The other, at the parks.
Okay. Got a motion by Howard, a second by Steve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey? Price?
Aye.
Sorenson? Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Call your wives, Mayor.
Aye. Motion carries. We could see a motion on the baseball and softball games.
Move.
Six.
And Steve, could you reiterate what your original?
Yes. My motion would be that we would allow the baseball and softball associations and Parks and Rec teams to schedule games under the condition that they put up signs and other warnings to keep social distance and to keep home and away crowds separate.
And no concessions?
And no concession.
Okay. Is that clear to the seconder, Howard?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Sorenson?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wives.
Aye. Motion carries. I think all we have left are playgrounds and basketball courts.
And park shelter?
Oh, and parks.
Yeah, do the park shelter.
Okay, let's do, let's do park shelter.
So I move that we open the park shelters to small groups or, yes, open the park shelter with restrictions.
Not to, for public things, but for private things?
Yes.
Got a motion, we have a second, we've got a second. Catherine and Steve, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
No.
Price?
Aye.
Sorenson?
We're not dividing playgrounds and parks separately?
We're, we haven't done that motion yet.
This is park shelters.
Oh, aye.
Sorry, aye, yes, aye.
Brian, that's an aye. Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wives.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, now, basketball courts and playgrounds, please.
Should have lumped those together?
I think that for this purpose, we can probably lump those together.
Make the motion.
You make the motion to open them?
Open, yes, I'm sorry, to open both, the basketball courts and the playgrounds.
Is there a second? Okay, we've got a motion by Rich, a second by Howard. Any further discussion?
To open which?
Basketball courts and playground equipment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
No.
Holland?
Yes.
Humphrey?
Aye.
Price?
You're muted, Catherine.
No.
Sorenson?
No.
Ward?
No.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wives.
No. Motion fails. All right. I think we got through everything. Jim, did we get through everything?
You did, and quickly. Thank you very much, everyone.
Jim, if I may, real quick, sorry, Mayor, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to reaffirm that we had decided at the last council meeting that we could not open the pool because we would not have time to get staff, the cost would be burdensome on a period of time in which the tax, taxes are lower, and that we were not willing to risk spread out on the deck. Is that correct?
That's right with me.
Yeah, there was a myriad of topics on it, but yes, we just kind of needed about a month to get it ready to open by June 15th is what we were shooting for on the May 18th meeting, and it was decided that evening that the, by council, that the pool wasn't going to be open. So since that time, we've sent letters to staff, prospective staff, and the current staff that we had already on payroll that we were not going to be opening the pool at this time. But yes, and then the COVID protocols would be in place, and so we were trying to devise a way that we could open it up with protocols in place and do it safely. It was not going to look like the same pool it would have looked like last year as far as amenities and whatnot, because we were going to take a lot of it out. But that was what you guys decided on for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Yep.
Before we move on to our next item, do we want to give staff any direction on working on a resolution? Is that something that the council wants to do? And if so, I guess we need to, we need to let John know that that's something that we'd like staff to be bringing together, some council members and community members to do this week. Catherine?
I think the big thing that we really discussed was how, and this was Jim or John's suggestion too, was how to put public health and public health education information into a resolution that it can be applicable and can be utilized by the businesses in town, and to gather input not only from the restaurants that presented tonight, but also the other various businesses that were mentioned in ordinance 1414 to make sure we get their input on that too, and the best ways to apply the public health guidelines to those specific businesses in town so that people who utilize them know the best way to keep themselves safe in our specific businesses and promote.
Steve?
Dr. Walker, do you have anything that you think we should add to this, you know, in our guidance to staff on writing this resolution?
I think the proposal was spot on and very well stated.
Okay, thank you.
John, if this is just sort of like consensus on what we'd like staff to do, is this something we need a motion on?
I don't think so. I think the direction is pretty clear to staff.
Okay.
Thank you, John, and thank you for your suggestion for that as well.
Yes, thank you. Really appreciate it.
You going to bring in interested parties?
Yes, I believe that was in the, what Catherine had said. Yep. Our next item, I believe, do we just need to table it, John, or pull it? It's because it's the fine?
Do you want, do you think we need a motion, Jim, or? Okay. So. So I guess, Jim, do you want a motion then, not to adopt a fee then for ordinance 1414? Is that?
Or I could just list in the minutes, since ordinance 1414 was not passed, that this item, no action was taken on this item?
Could we do that?
I'm sorry, do they need a motion?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what the conclusion was there, sorry.
I think what Mike was saying was that, and Jim agreed to it, is that since the ordinance 1414 wasn't adopted, the minutes can show that no action was taken on the item as it was not adopted.
Okay, wonderful, sounds great.
I do think, Monica has a question, if the council wants to entertain a question?
Is that fine with the council?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, I just, I think that we move forward, I guess.
They called because of Mike.
Come up to Mike, Monica.
I guess that we move forward then, that we, are we going to be contacted then for something in the future to get together, or I kind of miss what happened there. Did you guys, we move forward as far as we're going to get together for a resolution with business owners? You already did. Okay, I don't think we understood that.
We directed staff, we directed staff to work with the, with the business owners to craft a resolution.
Okay, so we'll just wait to be contacted?
Yes.
Thank you. I just don't know if we all understood that. I didn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
Hey, Rich, did you have something before we move on? Hey, Rich, did you have something before we move on?
Just, just to make it clear to Monica, that they know that there is, now there is currently no restrictions at all.
That's correct. Yes, for the business owners and the public.
Yes, we are aware of that, but.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, our next item, 8B, amendment to consultant agreement with SEH for the final report on the South Dakota Highway 50 drainage improvement project, Jose.
Thanks, I'm going to try and be brief, but essentially, I think all of you guys are aware of the project that the city is doing right now with SEH. It's been taken, taken us a couple of years to get to this point, at the very least, but regardless, at the March 2nd meeting, the city entered into an agreement with SEH to complete the final report for the Highway 50 drainage project. This agreement essentially required that the city complete a final report and the findings would be shared with the DOT. The DOT would be using these findings to actually complete the construction, set of plans set to be used for construction of the project. Since the March 2nd, the city has had several meetings with the DOT and SEH involved in those meetings as well, and the project, the scope of the project has changed significantly. The DOT now, rather than just wanting to use the city's findings, they're actually asking the city to complete the construction documents itself, themselves. And these are, they do take a lot of time, they take a lot of effort. So, this document, I guess, that you see here, this amendment, would be for that change, to go from just a report to a report and the construction documents. This, this would increase the fee to $72,650, which is an additional $29,860 from the original $42,790 that was approved on March 2nd. However, besides the fact that it's a significant increase, staff did actually approach Vermillion Basin Water Development District to see if a portion of this could actually be covered through a grant with them. Typically, that entity does not fund construction projects or development of construction plans, however, due to the fact that we have already expended city funds for reports without asking them for money, and that a large portion of this final, that $72,000 would actually be for a report, they granted the city, awarded the city a $25,000 grant, which is, for them, is a significant amount of money. We would be receiving this grant in the third quarter of the year. The city has budgeted $120,000 for, in the Stormwater Collection System Maintenance Fund for the design of the proposed storm sewer fund, or storm sewer pipe, although the city would have experienced a larger savings if the DOT would have actually completed the construction documents, the grant received from the Vermillion Basin Water. Development District offsets a large portion of the increased cost. The grant money would bring down the city's cost to $47,650. Staff recommends allowing the city manager to sign the amendment to the contract on behalf of the city with SEH for engineering services to complete the final report slash design and construction documents for the South Dakota Highway 50 Drainage Improvements Project.
All right, is there anyone in City Hall that wishes to comment on this item?
No.
Is there anyone online that has a comment on this item?
No, there's not.
Seeing none, I will turn it to the council.
Move approval. Tom Sorenson's got a question.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, and the state tries to make this really complicated anytime they can, or does it just seem that way?
It seems that way sometimes.
Okay, so really, we're talking about net, when everything's all over with, it'll cost us $4,860 more.
For the design portion of it, yes.
Because we got that grant for $25,000.
Yes.
We want more, but here's a grant, so it washes out, and we have it in the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, I move approval.
Okay, we had a motion by Brian and a second by Tom there, do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, please indicate your approval at the roll.
Helwig. Holland.
Aye.
Humphrey.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Sorenson.
Aye.
Ward. Wilson.
Aye.
Helwig. Mayor, call your wise.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, 8C, final plot of McHenry Street Right-of-Way, lots 3B in block 6, lot 4C in block 6, and lot 6B in block 6, all in Erickson addition, in addition to the city of Vermillion, Clay County, South Dakota, and Jose.
Thank you, Banner Associates submitted a final plot on behalf of the owners. The area that it's in question is actually located just west, oh, there's, perfect. Would actually be McHenry Street here, this is just, this would be Princeton. This lot here would be O'Reilly's, and this lot here would be Casey's, so Walmart would be in this area or vicinity over here. This would be Bauer, so McHenry Street would actually be punching this area here through, going west of Princeton, and it would provide access to lot 3B, lot 4C, lot 6B, and lot, outlot B over here. At this point, all of these three lots would actually be replatted, just because some of the area would actually be, to create the road, is actually being shaved of those lots, for lack of a better term. This area to be platted, including the, the street right-of-way, would actually be 9.8 acres in area, in space. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the plot at their May 26 meeting. At this meeting, the commission unanimously recommended approval of the plot to the city council. We did review this, we're trying to stay as far south as we can from the existing gas easement. We're incorporating the sanitary sewer easement within the right-of-way, so we're trying to maximize the use of this space to benefit all the property owners as much, as much as we can, and with their best interest as well. Again, the platting fee has been paid, staff finds that the final plot meets all of the ordinance requirements and recommends approval of the final plot.
Thank you, Jose. Assuming that there is no one in the audience and no one who has left a comment online, I will turn it to the council.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Howard and a second by Catherine, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig. Holland.
Aye.
Humphrey. Price.
Aye.
Sorenson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, declaration and surplus, 38 abandoned bicycles for the USD auction, Mike.
When bicycles are found abandoned within the city, the police department documents the item and stores them in the basement of the safety center until they can be claimed or declared surplus and be sold or disposed of. City ordinance requires the bikes be kept 90 days, and if they're not claimed, it allows them to be disposed of by the department. Normally, the city has auction in the spring, but due to COVID-19 and getting a large group of people together for an auction, we, that was canceled this year. But the police department needs room in their basement, USD is having an auction in August for some of their surplus property. They offered to allow the city to include theirs, the police department is requesting the city council declare these 38 bikes as abandoned to be surplus and sold at auction, and if they're not in a condition to be sold, that they just be disposed of at the landfill.
Thanks, Mike, any questions from the council?
And move we declare these bikes abandoned?
And I second that.
We've got a motion from Steve and a second from Brian, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig. Holland.
Aye.
Humphrey.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Sorenson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item is Central Ward vacancy. John?
Thank you, I'll just kind of walk through the process here quickly. On May 4th, a council member, Collier Wise, was appointed as mayor, which created a vacancy in the Central Ward at the May 18th meeting. The council established that they would accept expression of interest forms, resume, cover letters, whatever information individuals wanted to submit by 5:00 PM on Thursday, May 28th, for consideration of appointment this evening. There were four individuals who submitted an application materials to serve as a Central Ward council member, and those were included within your packet. I would just note, for the public benefit, tonight, the city council would be appointing someone to serve. The city council has what's called the reorganization meeting on July 6th. We would anticipate that the person elect for this seat, Kelsey Collier Wise, will not choose to qualify for the Central Ward office, which would be by taking the oath. And so, the person you would appoint tonight would continue to serve, and then we would anticipate, but this would be council decision, on July 20th, then you would appoint that individual to serve a year term. They would serve until July of 2021, and there would be an election on June 1st of 2021 to elect an individual for the final three years of the original term. So, with that background for the public, it's a little bit messy, I understand. We'd note to the council, you have four applications to consider for appointment for someone to fill the Central Ward city council seat.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Tom.
The, the appointment then to the very, to the boards that this person would serve on, as well as the others, wouldn't take place then until July 6th, is that correct?
I'm not sure I understand the question, like the, whether on utilities committee or surplus property, those sorts of things?
Yeah, those, the various boards that we each have two.
Right, yep, those would be on July 6th during your reorganization meeting.
I nominate Lindsey Genowine.
We lost you guys.
Oh. Uh-oh, I guess we really lost them.
We're all alone, no. Oh, we're back.
Nomination don't require a second. I don't know if you, if you missed that.
We missed all of it, sorry, we completely lost City Hall.
I nominate Lindsey Genowine.
All right.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to nominate Lindsey Genowine to fill the Central Ward vacancy, is there any further discussion?
I do want to say one thing.
Go for it.
I'd like to thank all of the four applicants who put in their applications, it was great to have such an enthusiastic response for this seat, and I hope that the people who put in their applications continue to apply to serve on boards and stuff, because it's great to see that kind of interest in the city workings.
Thank you, Catherine. Hello, all right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please indicate your approval at the roll.
Helwig. Holland.
Aye.
Humphrey. Humphrey.
Aye, yes, aye.
Sorry, Sorenson.
Aye.
Ward. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye. Motion carries. And then my understanding, John?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Motion carries, again. My understanding then is that our new councilperson would be sworn in at the next meeting, is that correct, John?
Correct, will probably placed as one of the first things on your agenda for the June 15th meeting, so that she can participate in the meeting.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much. All right, moving on to bid openings. Did we have fuel quotes, Mike?
Yes, we do, I don't know if they got sent out or whatever, but I can read through them here quick. First quote, burning service and unleaded gasoline, 10% ethanol is $1.55. There, there it is on the screen, unleaded gasoline regular, $1.75. Number 2 diesel fuel die, $1.20. Number 2 diesel fuel clear, $1.56. Jerry service on item 1, $1.71. Item 2, $1.86. Item 3, $1.53. Item 4, $1.81. Stern oil on item 1, $1.50.7 cents. Item 2, $1.70.12 cents. Item 3, $1.19.26 cents. And item 4, $1.48.84. Stern would be low on all four items.
Move approval of the low bid.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the low bid, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig. Holland.
Aye.
Humphrey.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Sorenson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye. Motion carries, next bid opening is 2020 miscellaneous concrete project, Jose.
Thank you, the city, so you know, we have a miscellaneous concrete project that every year we try and improve on some of our sidewalks, sidewalk ramps, or repair some curb and gutter and do some also repairs to storms, to the city storm sewer system. This city, this year, the city senate requests six contractors and the project also to four plant houses. From all of those, we only received two bids on May 27th. The bid from Walker Construction was not read, since it did not include the required bid bond. The low and only bid at that point then was from, excuse me, Eminem Construction from Vermillion for $64,138.61. As all of you know, bidding is required by state law when the cost of the project is estimated to be over $50,000. Since the estimate was over this amount, the city did obviously put it out to bid. The project will be paid through several funds due to the areas that will, the work will be taking place. Administration recommends awarding the project to Eminem Construction for the amount of $64,138.31.
Thank you, Jose. Council?
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor, please indicate at the roll.
Helwig. Holland.
Aye.
Humphrey.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Sorenson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, bid openings on hangar taxi lane improvements at the airport, Jose.
Thank you, the existing CIP for the airport calls for the reconstruction of the taxi lane around the hangars. Bids on this project were open on May 28th, four bids were received, the low bid was from Webster Scale Incorporated out of Webster, South Dakota, at $824,886.60, while the high bid came in at $1,081,440. Bidding, again, is required when anything's over $50,000. This is a blow-up of the airport, the terminal building would be here, this would be Dakota Street, this is a road that goes to the airport. The area here that I have in black would actually be the hangar taxi lane, that would be the area that would actually be reconstructed. That's, for lack of a better term, is the road that leads from the hangars to the apron or to the, to the actual runway, so forth. It's what anybody that has a plane at the airport uses every day. Typically, the city pays for 100% of the cost and is reimbursed at the, when the project is completed for 95% of the project cost. In this instance, the city share would be $41,244. However, due to the COVID pandemic, there's an opportunity for additional funding from the federal government, which would reduce the city's share to a maximum of $9,750. It could also go as low as zero. The city will not know the amount of the additional federal government funding until at least 30 days after the grant application has been submitted. Administration recommends accepting the bid from Webster Scale for $824,886.60 contingent upon a receipt of an FAA grant offer. Also, to meet expected short timelines in the grant process, the city council is asked to authorize the mayor to sign the FAA grant application, FAA grant offer, and all necessary paperwork for the contract documents.
Council?
Move approval of the bid and to authorize the mayor to sign the grant application and keep our fingers crossed.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify at the roll.
Holland.
Aye.
Humphrey.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Sorensen.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Now, city managers report. John?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items for you. You may recall at our last meeting, there was a request from the University Police Department for the temporary street closings of Plum Street and Rose Street for their August move-in days. That item was tabled at the request of UPD on Friday, as they're reevaluating that process and maybe making some additional changes, so we'll bring it to you should we receive an update to it. Our Historic Preservation Commission is meeting this Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. Couple of the boards that we have openings on, one is our Vermillion Housing Authority, they have a term that's expiring later this month. Interested individuals are asked to complete the expression of interest form. It is a five-year appointment, and we ask that that be turned in by Thursday, June 11th at 5:00, so we can put those materials together. We anticipate that the city council could then make an appointment at your June 15th meeting. We have more opportunities on our Planning and Zoning Commission. We have five terms which are expiring at the end of this month. Interested individuals are again asked to complete an expression of interest form. These are also five-year terms. We'd ask that those applications, materials be turned in by Wednesday, July 1st at 5:00 p.m., so that we can put the packet materials together to the council, and we would anticipate the city council to make appointments at your July 6th meeting. Our Streetscape project, there is going to be a public meeting, it'll be available on, it's Tuesday, June 9th at 7:00 p.m. The Zoom link and additional information is located on our city's website. It wouldn't be one of these reports if I didn't mention the census is underway, so please, if you haven't completed the 2020 census, it's not too late to do so, we encourage everyone in our community and our county to complete that. And then I guess one final item, earlier this afternoon, our police department became aware of some social media traffic indicating that there could be protests or riots, sort of like what unfortunately Sioux Falls saw last evening, that that could be coming to the Vermillion Yankton area this evening, Monday, June 1st. And we do not have a way to verify the, you know, the authenticity of these social media reports, but it's a, we have a great working relationship with Yankton, and it's a joint working project, I guess the two agencies are working together and communicating to address this situation. As a precaution, we just wanted to let the public know that this alert had been received and that it has been thoroughly reviewed and investigated. That's all that I had.
All right, thank you, John. Moving on to invoices payable. Any questions for Mike?
Move payables?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pay our bills, all those in favor, please indicate at the roll.
Holland.
Aye.
Humphrey.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Sorensen.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye, motion carries. Consensus agenda, item A, set a public hearing date of June 15th, 2020 for renewal of retail on-off sale malt beverage license in South Dakota Farm Wine for Airmark Educational Services, LLC, for Airmark at 1101 North Dakota Street, in Vermillion Cultural Association for Coyote Twin at 10 East Main, and item B, set a public hearing date of June 15th, 2020 for a special daily malt beverage and wine license for the Vermillion Area Chamber and Development Company on or about Thursday, July 9th, July 16th, July 23rd, July 30th, August 6th, August 13th, August 20th, and August 27th, 2020, on riding and plots, half block of Market Street, south of Main Street and Main Street, as it abuts the plots, east to Center Street for Thursdays on the plots event.
Move approval of the consensus agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consensus agenda, all those in favor, please indicate at the roll.
Holland.
Aye.
Humphrey.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Sorensen.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye, motion carries. Steve?
I move we adjourn, and would like to thank all of my colleagues for a difficult night and a good discussion that I think benefited our public. I'd also like to thank Kelsey, our mayor, for having to shoulder the responsibility of these difficult decisions. None of us are enjoying the decisions we have to make, but this is the burden that we have agreed to share in these positions, so good, we're doing as best we can.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor, please signify at the roll.
Holland.
Aye.
Humphrey.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Sorensen.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye. We are adjourned.